I would like to reconvene the meeting from closed session and call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of January 18, 2022. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll and make an announcement about accessing the meeting?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo? You did say here.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. In case you're wondering, Mr. Escobedo is, um, here remotely.
Yes.
That didn't sound quite right, did it?
That's okay, I was gonna make that announcement. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Escobedo will be participating in, uh, this, uh, meeting this evening via Zoom. Councilmember Escobedo, can you please confirm that you hear us okay?
Yes, I...
Uh, no. You can hear me? Okay, just give me a moment. Can you try again?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Not very clearly. One more try?
Can you hear me?
Yay, there we go. Okay, there we go. Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Just a moment, please. Um, um, just as a reminder, uh, Councilmember Escobedo, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand in Zoom to notify me when you wish to speak so I can convey that to the mayor.
Okay.
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 864-86959002. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Our first item this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about you, I'm sorry.
That's easy to do.
Mr. Watson, would you please give a report from closed session?
Yes, ma'am. Well, with respect to, uh, the closed session item as listed, instructions were provided to the agency representatives regarding the outstanding bargaining units.
Thank you. So then our first item this evening is the public comment portion. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speaker will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And Madam Mayor, before the, um, speakers begin, we have, um, several, um, and, um, I have some written communications, um, and they, one was received from Jaclyn McNeil, former library board trustee, communicating her praise of former library director Mary Housel for her work to expand programs at the library along with her leadership and work with the Library Foundation. And Kyra Solis of Planned Parenthood, Christina Hernandez, and Linda Ramirez wrote in support of the Corazon del Pueblo Cultural and Creative Arts Center condemning recent vandalism of the property at the organization and requesting the City Council support programs and services that provide inclusivity and condemn racism. And then finally, uh, the final written communication was by Lydia Maron, who wrote that she did not support a change to the City of Santa Maria logo. These communications for public comment were emailed to council members as they were received, posted to the city's agenda in a public comment, and printed and placed at the dais before, uh, the council this evening. And Madam Mayor, we have, um, present eight requests to speak and six have registered via Zoom, and it looks like I have four hands up, um, of attendees. So, um, I'm gonna give you the present ones in, in chambers first.
Okay.
Three minutes?
Um, three minutes will be fine.
Okay.
Paul Singh, followed by Virginia Souza, followed by Suzanne Hasnik.
Should I begin?
Yes, Mr. S... You just come right over to the podium there and get the speaker situated so you can speak into it comfortably and we're good.
All right, is this good?
That's good.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'd like to first say thank you very much for being the mayor. Uh, I've noticed that you have an in-depth attitude about this city and you leave no stone unturned. And what I'm trying to say is, we need more people like you in this city. The City Council seems to be very orderly and intelligent. They've all spoke to me, or many of them spoke to me and given me great ideas and enthusiasm about this city. Um, I love it very much. I am a man of service. Uh, I have been assisting, uh, remotely the Police Department in troubled areas whenever possible, um, and they have appreciated me. And many times when they were in an emergency situation, I've told them, just tell me to knock it off in simple terms, and they went and did their emergency situation, and I hope lives were being saved at that time. I also believe that COVID-19 will pass, and, and, I mean dissipate, but it's gonna take time, and it's gonna take cooperation, and it's gonna take people doing what maybe they don't wanna do, which is get vaccinated. I am fully vaccinated. I've also had flu shots, and I'm very interested in bringing back freedom for all so that no one has to have any trouble in any way. I'm also interested in maybe, um, doing some messenger work for the city. I don't know how to go about that. Um, I'm not a computer guy. Uh, I am an older gentleman. I'm 65 years old, but I'm kinda young for my age, and I just don't wanna quit. I'm just getting excited about this city. It's a great city, it's got some of the biggest parks around. Um, I used to take my little bird who sat on my shoulder and, um, take it down to the duck park, and she just loved it to death. And when I had her, I didn't have to close the cage, she knew what to do. And in the mornings sometimes she would jump off, come over and feed me, and it was just a delightful thing. I believe in animals, I believe in all our freedoms, and I don't want those curtailed in any way. Um, I also think it's a good thing to help the people that have gotten out of jail because of COVID-19 not to go back. So we need to give them education, and we also need to get them work, and then we need to get them work that they love. I'm gonna yield the rest of my time, and I really thank you all for listening. God bless you all, and God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Virginia Souza, followed by Suzanne Hasnik, followed by Margaret Cooper.
Madam Mayor and esteemed City Council, um, I speak to you as an individual today, a second-generation Santa Marian. I do not reside within the city limits, um, but I do own commercial and realis... and residential property within the city limits, and I do love this city. Um, first, I have two things, actually three, three things to speak very briefly about. The first is our librarian, Mary Housel. I have found that Mary Housel had, did meaningful improvements in our library. The first week she came to Santa Maria, she came into the Natural History Museum across the street where I'm a volunteer, and she immediately became a member. I found Mary to be inquisitive, intelligent, and had very high standards. As a library patron, I want to acknowledge her contribution to our community publicly tonight. My second topic is regarding the Landmark Committee moving away from independence and being folded into the Recreation and Parks Department. I personally have talked to friends who know qualified city residents that may agree to serve on that committee, so I would request that process be postponed in light of this information. And perhaps someone from the Historical Society also knows people. I think it's, uh, very sad to see government taking over independent commissions. And the third topic is regarding Corazon del Pueblo. I read recently about some racial incidents, um, there on that property, and I think our city should, our city leadership particularly, should speak out against this kind of, um, of, um, racist and sexist, or I'm not sure what you call it, but it's, it's, um, a hate issue, and we see a lot of it in our country, and I think here we are, right at the grassroots. I think we need to stand up and speak against any such acts. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Hasnik, followed by Margaret Cooper, followed by Pedro Rodriguez.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I'm Suzanne Hanek.
I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Oh, that's all right, I'm used to that.
I hate to not do that. Thank you.
Um, I'm here to speak in support of Mary Housel. Mary Housel's tenures of service as the City of Santa Maria's librarian have been exemplary. Her long list of accomplishments gives a strong testament to her creativity, hard work, and dedication to bring our library system into an age of technology, diversity, and inclusion. She's encouraged and helped implement veteran services, passport services, job-seeking services, book club kits, Santa Barbara Opera presentations, expanded youth teen programs, senior services, and an inclusive and thriving atmosphere at the main library and at the Orchid, Los Alamos, and Quiama branches. In addition, Mary Housel started the Santa Maria Public Library Foundation as a means of fundraising and support for a homework help, uh, help center for the youth of our community, Wi-Fi at all branch locations, a modern bookmobile designed to expand literacy and library access, and traveling to underserved neighborhoods in our community. As a lifelong resident of Santa Maria, I see these and many other accomplishments as a beacon of what a modern community library system should look like. And thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Cooper, followed by Pedro Rodriguez, followed by Gary Hall. Good evening, Ms. Cooper.
My name is Margaret Cooper, and I've known Mary ever since she came to this city. Uh, I'm, I'm, uh, speaking not only as a board member, but as a, as a citizen and as a user of the library. And since she has, under her leadership, uh, she has, there, there's been so many different wonderful programs that have occurred, including the, uh, Succulent Exchange for Gardeners, uh, and there was a, a time when, uh, people of Santa Maria could go to the opera and get free transportation if they bought a ticket to the Santa Barbara Opera, which I thought was a wonderful, wonderful deal, and I took advantage of that. In fact, I've taken advantage of a lot of, of wonderful programs that the library has, has instigated under her leadership. And so I'm here to sing the praises of Mary Housel. Uh, I know that others can express themselves much better than I can, but as a senior citizen, I am here to tell you that I, I enjoyed my time not only on the board, but as a, as a female and as a senior citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pedro Lopez, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Laura Selken. I'm sorry, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Lopez, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, Council?
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I want to speak on a pro, a bid protest that we submitted in November as the Chapel Street Parking Lot renovation. I've provided each of you there with a little packet so you guys can follow along on my protest. Uh, my first, uh, item of protest was, um, New Construction, who was the low bidder, parent low bidder on this project, failed to, uh, list subcontractors for, for work that, uh, is more than one-half of one percent on their total bid, which is public works code. Any contractor gonna perform more than one-half of one percent must be listed on their subcontractor list. So the work that was not, or subcontractor that was not listed for, uh, for this project was an asphalt paver. Uh, they didn't list one. So if you don't list a subcontractor per public contract code, you're implying that you're gonna perform the work in-house. So with that said, bid form, I think it's the last page there, there's the construction equipment that is part of the bid package, which they wrote NA. So I listed four, three or four different items on here that he needs to re, uh, report or list a subcontractor for because it's more than one-half of one percent. Unless they're producing it, we're gonna install it in-house. Now, if you're gonna do this much work in-house, why wouldn't you list any equipment? We all did, all of others, other contractors did. Uh, so that's one. And they didn't list anybody to do earthwork or demo, so if you're gonna do that in-house, why not list your equipment? So that's, you know, three or four irregularities per job description. Permeable pavers, they listed a landscaper, but they listed landscaping and not permeable paving. That also requires equipment. Uh, lastly, they listed, if you look at the list of subcontractors, Part Four, they listed a concrete company to do site work and masonry. Well, if you're a concrete company and you don't have a mason license, you can't perform masonry. So there's an eight-foot block wall that needs to be built here, and he didn't list an appropriate subcontractor. So again, are you doing it in-house? We don't know because you didn't list any equipment. So we've been around a long time, I've been doing work for the city for almost 18 years, and we all know that Eric Newton doesn't do these work, this work in-house. He doesn't pave, doesn't do any concrete. All they do is electrical, which he's also the owner of the PacWest General, who's the second, uh, subcontractor that they listed there. So all these irregularities and inconsistencies on this bid, he should have been found non-responsible.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, and, uh, Mr. Stowell, I'll turn this over to you to handle, okay?
Sure, actually, um, this is coming up, upcoming on the Council's February 15 meeting, and I can ask, um, City Attorney Tom Lawson to comment further.
Okay.
Again, at this time, uh, it's inappropriate to comment.
Right.
You can take these comments, uh, and we will have an op, an open forum for, um, responses to each of the protests.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Gary Hall, followed by Laura Selken.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team. On January 5, at our request, you received a letter from our attorney, Mr. Bruce Stanton. In his letter, he outlined the need for mobile home rent stabilization along with a long list of flaws contained in the model lease, and those flaws continue to prevent broad participation by the mobile home residents that came to you looking for help. We have recently discovered what appears to be a blatant disregard by park owners for the enforcement agreement. They crafted. What does that say about the adequacy of the model lease? This just adds to the insult. The model lease is delivered to mobile home residents in Santa Maria. This can't be the result the council wanted. This can't be what you, Madam Mayor, had in mind when you said you support the model lease and believe it to be an adequate answer to rising space rents in mobile home parks. Dozens of my fellow mobile homeowners and residents from several different Santa Maria parks have attended numerous past council meetings. Many have poured their hearts out, pleading for your help. Our numbers are smaller tonight due to COVID and other health issues, but their spirit is with us. We are here again tonight and hope you will acknowledge our appeals and do the right thing by adding mobile home rent stabilization to the agenda of a future meeting. Tonight, I once again implore you to open new discussions to consider either our proposed mobile home rent stabilization ordinance, or to at least fix and renegotiate the model lease and the enforcement program. Mobile home residents of Santa Maria need and deserve your help. Please act now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Laura Selken, followed by Andrea Mayfield.
Good evening, my name is Laura Selken. I'm here to speak on three topics. First, um, in recognition of City Librarian Mary Housel. I have known her for nearly 10 years and have always been extremely impressed with her record at the library. She worked nonstop to improve its services, its resources, and its staff, and we have all read the rewards of that work, from the implementation and expansion of the many library branches, especially in New Quiama and Los Alamos, to the creation of a foundation that served all the branches, to the hard work of bringing us a bookmobile despite the lack of city funding or support. She and the staff she cultivated and encouraged have brought us too many programs to list, all of them here, but they include makerspace, services for job seekers, veterans, and especially the houseless, issuing passports, free opera performances, book club in a band, numerous children's programs and services, Wi-Fi expansion, especially in the branches, and on and on. I am deeply saddened that she will no longer be our librarian, and I can only hope that her replacement will continue in her path of service, serving all the residents of our community, both rich and poor. Second, I would like to improve, implore the City Council to please place a rent stabilization ordinance for mobile home parks in this city on your agenda. I live in one, we need it. I would like to say that I understand why you refuse to do so, but I think I have finally realized that you are afraid to do so. Why? Because the majority of you are currently opposed to it, and you are confident it won't pass, so why not just do it and get it over with? Well, because you are worried about the residents of the Santa Maria will think about such a vote. They will realize that you don't care about low-income residents, that you don't care about those on fixed incomes, that you don't care about thousands of your constituents. When you run for reelection, you're opposed to remind your constituents of this vote. If you don't think that this is the case, that people won't care how your voter rent stabilization ordinance, then why not do it? Why not put it on the agenda? And last but definitely not least, I would like to state that I am appalled to learn of the vandalism and verbal abuse direct at the Corazon del Pueblo, the Cultural and Creative Arts Center in Santa Maria. These acts of racism cannot be tolerated, and I implore this, our city leaders to speak out on this, condemn the behavior, and work together with the Arts Center and other similar programs and groups to implement and promote programs and services that celebrate our diverse cultures and prevent violence in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Mayfield.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Andrea Mayfield. I have lived in the Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates Mobile Home Park in Santa Maria for 15 years. I co, I have come before you numerous times to advocate for the rent stabilization for mobile home residents in Santa Maria. I worked to ensure equal access to justice for low-wealthing individuals and families for 35 years, so you can understand why justice is important to me. As you know, the Reverend Martin Luther King was all about justice. In celebrating his life this weekend, I was reminded of his wise words to us. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And the art of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice. These words focused me not on the content of the model lease that the council adopted, but on the process. The city was represented by the city attorney, but the mobile home residents working to find justice for those paying higher and higher rents had no legal representation. This was an obvious imbalance of power. Also, my park owner's attorney, Lisa Totes, assisted in drafting the model lease. How do I know this? Because it is basically word for word, identical to the Rancho Buena Vista lease. This was not just. I recall an attorney from Santa Barbara County Legal Aid Foundation attended a City Council meeting. On her behalf, he asked to sit in on the closed-door negotiations between the city attorney, the city manager, and Lisa Totes, but he was barred. I never understood why he couldn't sit in on our behalf. This was an imbalance of power, this was not just. We need to revisit the process used to develop the model lease, with a night providing equal representation and greater consideration of the needs of mobile home residents in Santa Maria. We are the residents of your city and deserve your consideration. Please protect mobile home rent affordability. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you said you had three people to speak.
Let me just double-check. Uh, we, it looks like we have four people to speak. There is a phone number with that, so when we get to that one, I'll just double-check. Um, we have hands raised. Uh, so the first, uh, online speaker is, uh, Cliff Solomon.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Cliff Solomon, and I'd like to speak briefly on two issues. First, I'm speaking in support of Mary Housel, who recently retired from the Santa Maria City Library. Under Mary's supervision, the library expanded its services to our community, oversaw new branch library projects in several cities, installed Wi-Fi at all branch locations, and strategized with various city staff and community organizations to help our homeless community. Recently, she attempted to bring back patrons who might have been worried that they were not wanted due to overdue fines. Regrettably, three of you voted this down. That is unfortunate. And so I am publicly thanking Mary for her excellent service to the community and hope that you will make, will make more compassionate decisions in the future. Second, I want to urge the City Council to support Corazon del Pueblo, a local organization that has recently been vandalized. Corazon del Pueblo provides a location where cultural and creative arts projects are displayed for our community, and it is a real shame that this vandalism occurred. I ask the City Council to realize that racism and social injustice exist in our city. I urge you to demand that Santa Maria Police conduct a thorough investigation into this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
The next speaker we have is Sarah McDonald.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council members and, and participating people in person. I'd like to talk on two items tonight. Firstly, if you can't hear me, I'm, I'm wearing my mask indoors, so that's probably why you can't hear me very well. I'd like to speak on behalf of Mary Council. I believe that, you know, our city librarians do, we get all them jobs, but we, that we don't really see behind the scenes. And as a poor person, she took, uh, she took risks to bring us, bring those of us who are of low income back into the fold and, and forgive our fines. I haven't had any fines, but I do know what it's like to be a low-income person who has to decide what to pay for. And that also goes along with, uh, the rent stabilization, uh, pro, programs that needs to be put. And that also goes along with the rent stabilization programs that needs to be put into place. You know, poor people can't afford those rents. And if you want people to be on the streets, then keep it up. Also, we need to have a rapid response on hate crimes. What happened at Corazon del Pueblo was deplorable, and we all need to work together to solve the problem of injustice against everyone. So please consider these things and know what it's like to be a poor person. I am one of them, and I'm not hiding this guy anymore. I'm a low-income person. There are 140 million of us in this country and 20 million in this state. Who knows how many are in your community? And we vote, and we will vote you in or we will vote you out. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to confirm that the telephone listed ending in the last three digits, 230, I'll come back to that person who's checked in by phone. The next individual is Alex Espinoza Kulik.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and fellow community members. My name is Kulik, and I'm the Executive Director for Corazon del Pueblo, the Cultural and Creative Arts Center in the Santa Maria Valley. I want to thank the many community members who have already voiced their support of our organization in light of recent acts of racially motivated violence, including verbal attacks and vandalism to our property. Unfortunately, the most striking instance of physical damage was actually the removal of our La La Xito Library, and it's particularly disheartening to hear, to feel the loss of that resource for our community in contrast with the recognition of all the great work being done through our city library to increase access to knowledge, arts, and culture. Our organization formed in response to the overarching issues of violence and economic insecurity in our community, which have gone unchecked for too long. The strategies that we're currently engaged in are not working. The police have not provided an adequate response to this particular situation and are unable to address the larger issues that we see in our community, including racism, violence, and a sense of disconnection in which property damage becomes normalized and we see the vandalism and hatred of our neighbors, of people of color, class, communities in particular, and of the physical spaces that we inhabit as a community pervade and facilitate and empower individuals to engage in harmful acts. So I do want to call on our city leadership to take strong decisive response in condemning this act of racist violence and all acts of racism, hatred, and bigotry. Such statements need to be made by a concrete investment in programs and services that are proven to reduce racial bias and racial violence, including aspects of culture and multiculturalism that can celebrate our diverse communities as they exist and as they contribute to our city. The city of Santa Maria is 70% Latino Hispanic or La La Xito, and our voices within the La La Xito community need to be heard in driving solutions to this problem. And so we will be partnering with other community organizations, faith groups, and business leaders to mobilize a whole community response in increasing our efforts of ensuring that we have a positive, civil, and respectful built environment. And I want to invite our city leadership to support those efforts and also to join with us as we respond as a community to take responsibility for the cultures that we represent here and the people who are part of our families and part of our community businesses and fellowship. So thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration and hope to work with you all to solve these long-term problems that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Kulik. The next person on our Zoom is Kathleen Sherram.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Sherram, and I'm a resident of Santa Maria and also a member of... Excuse me, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm a resident of Santa Maria and a member of the Santa Maria Chapter of STURGE, which stands for Showing Up For Racial Justice. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm wanting to speak tonight, as others have, on the recent horrific acts of racism and violence that took place at Corazon del Pueblo, Santa Maria's Cultural Arts Center, normally a place of refuge and creativity that space has now been compromised, that feeling of freedom and safety compromised. We're all aware of how polarized our entire country has become right now, but we all need to remember that divisiveness can breed hatred, and hatred and racism tears communities apart. I am here to ask that all of you, as our leaders, probably condemn what happened at our cultural center and tell our city you will not tolerate acts of racism in any form. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Julie Garrett.
Hello. I'm Julie Garrett, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am the president of the Natural History Museum, and I'm also a local resident. I would like to express my appreciation for Mary Housel, our excellent, innovative librarian. She has served on our Natural History Museum Advisory Board, partnering with us for student visits. She brought the bookmobile for the museum grand opening, and she's answered many other questions that I posed to her. Mary is pleasant, and she's knowledgeable to work with, and we will miss you, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, we have one more person I'm going to check with. Excuse me. They're calling in by phone with the last three digits, 230. They have their hand up in Zoom. 805 with the last three digits of 230. You're unmuted or asked to unmute if you want to speak. Okay, Madam Mayor, I'm not getting a response, so that would be the end of our speakers on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you want to make any comments?
No, just, it was nice to hear the positive testimony about Mary Housel's service. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Yes. Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
No, I don't.
None? Mr. Cordero? Okay.
With that, I'd like to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation to provide an update regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, projects and the actions being taken by the city to advance projects consistent with the City Council ARPA strategic priorities.
Staff report will be made by City Manager Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll just introduce the item. So the city is projected to receive $37.2 million of ARPA federal stimulus funds. The council did provide initial direction or provided direction on how to prioritize those funds. Staff's been working to find projects and other expenditures that align with that. We provide, I should say, when the council identified the policy priorities, they also directed staff to report back with the projects. And so we are here today to report back on the projects. Andrew Hackelman's here, as well as the department staff, who can answer any questions you may have about projects, but Andrew can give an overview of where we are today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hackelman.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to present this to you today. Here to update you on the status of the ARPA projects that we've put together and staff's done at your request. But since it's been over seven months since we were last with you to discuss this subject, it's probably a good idea to just level set on how we got here. You know, there's been a lot going on with respect to the federal rules that the U.S. Treasury has put forth, and there have been some changes, and we've been looking for them, as have all jurisdictions, to kind of settle out and become very clear. And in the meantime, staff has been identifying projects to advance and begin to develop that are consistent with the council's direction. So on May 4th of 2021, the council passed a resolution appropriating ARPA funds and directing staff to use the funds to advance your three strategic priorities, which were to reimburse the city for the costs incurred by COVID, by the pandemic. The second strategic priority was to invest in one-time projects that can be completed within the timeline and that are feasible to be done with the ARPA funds. And then finally, to strengthen the city's financial position to prepare for future emergencies. So the project planning being pursued by staff has been scrupulously undertaken to make sure that it's all in alignment with council direction, as well as meeting the requirements of the many rules and frankly, many restrictions that are imposed by the U.S. Treasury in the use of these ARPA funds. And those things include things like the types of projects, the project timeline, so there's a kind of a time in which all these funds need to be spent. And the project list is, really should be considered a living document. It's a draft that will be updated on a regular basis and will be brought back to council for updates, for awareness, and for discussion on a regular basis. So this project list has projects in a variety of categories that you can see in your agenda packet. So parks, playgrounds that are either improvements or developments, homeless encampment cleanup, water and sewer projects that are important for improving capacity in the city and supporting economic development, as well as broadband. So the projects cover a variety of areas. And again, all of these are projects that are in alignment with council's direction when the funds were appropriated, and they also meet the eligibility criteria that the federal government says must be met in order to spend funds in these areas. And so with that, I'm finished with the presentation. This is an opportunity to kind of just have a first blush kind of look at the status, and we're really at the beginning of this process, but we're looking forward to moving forward quickly and meeting these requirements. The only additional item that I think it's worth mentioning at this point is that because these funds are very restrictive, you know, we've pulled these priorities here to be able to execute and do projects that the city has prioritized, that the council's prioritized, and taken them out of other sources of funding. So we're trying to really make the most of our ability to execute on priorities that the council has set for us.
Okay, council, any questions? Ms. Soto?
Yes, thank you. My question is on... Well, I'll start with the homeless safety and quality of life project that was listed on here. It was mentioned just now in the report that it'd be used also as a homeless cleanup. Can you please clarify exactly what you, how you envision the homeless safety and quality of life project looking like, or whether it's just going to be an encampment cleanup?
Yeah, absolutely, Councilmember Soto and Madam Mayor. So this particular item, it's a range of activities that the city is trying to put together, a holistic approach to working on the challenges presented by homelessness. And a component of it is encampment cleanup. We're trying to integrate the different functions of the city, so code enforcement, police, and our rangers and others to make sure that we're reaching out to the members of our houseless population and coordinating also with nonprofits and the county on making sure that we're connecting people to resources when they accept them. And so having a really, really robust effort at doing outreach and where we find the biggest challenges with encampments, where there's clearly unsafe and unsanitary conditions that need to be addressed, that will connect individuals to resources and do the proper noticing and clean up those encampments. And with the proviso that there are capacities and support services that exist to be able to directly match those houseless individuals to those services.
The follow-up question is, how are we envisioning working with the county on this particular project?
That's a great question. So the county has recently drafted their own strategic plan. Our plan is consistent with that, so we're in regular communication with the county on how they're making their approach. So the encampments that they've identified in their plan kind of follow the 101 corridor, and the city is mapping and kind of trying to understand better where the encampments exist within the city limits, not in the Caltrans right away. And so we're collaborating on how those encampments are being addressed so that we're not duplicating our efforts.
Thank you. My next question is on the license plate readers. I see two projects listed on here. One for $534,000 and some change, and the second one is for $237,503 years and $393,250 for five years. What's the difference between each of those?
Okay, that's a really good question. They're separated because we currently have 35 license plate readers, or 31, I should say, and we want to increase that number. We've done some analysis on where these license plates readers can be placed without creating redundancies to be able to have our police be able to respond to things like shootings or robberies and things like that in a way that's proving to be very powerful and effective. And so that additional funding is to get services for an additional 100 cameras approximately, and that will allow for coverage that won't be duplicative, but will maximize our ability to use that technology to keep the city safe.
Why weren't we able to put it in one line item?
We can. We separated it out to show that there's an existing contract that we want to continue.
Is that the first one?
Let me read this here. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Good music.
All good for that.
It's a good song.
New iPhones. I don't know how to use them very effectively. Okay, so Chief, do you have this? The second one, I believe, is the one that we already have. Is that correct? The lower dollar amount one? So that's the existing contract. The other one is to augment that with an additional 100 cameras.
Oh, so these are contracts that we already have in place, and we're looking to get reimbursed for, essentially, as an expense during the pandemic. Okay. Got it. Got it. This is just a comment, not so much a question. I'm glad that we're working in collaboration or that we're having continuous conversations with the county regarding homelessness. However, I would like to see something in here that would help with the prevention piece. Is there any way that we would be able to fund a project or see how we can plug in with the county's existing strategic plan or their plan, the county plan for homelessness that is more aimed for prevention?
Well, we're part of the Committee on Homelessness that the staff has at the county, and we are part of their strategic plan, so we have collaborated on how those efforts are going to be made. But as for prevention, I think I'd, you know, offer, you know, to City Manager Stillwell to address. you know, to City Manager Stillwell to address that, how we would be addressing that.
So the, we'll further look at it. I mean, the one issue is the limitation of the funds and how they should be used. There are some additional flexibility on the guidelines or guidance from a couple of weeks ago. But yeah, I think as Assistant City Manager Hackelman said, we're working with the county. There is some opportunity to create more hotel conversions and other things that we partnered with the county on for Galita when they converted their Super 8 motel. So we're working with them, and as opportunities arise, we are looking at partnering with them.
That's interesting because I think that's important. But what did you have in mind? Because I'm, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have something in mind. I was just wondering if city staff had thought about what can we do in the prevention, as preventative measures to, for homelessness? I know that right now, one of the things that the county has been looking to identify has really been like, what are some, like conversions, like motel conversions to see if we would be able to provide rapid shelters for folks, because I know that there aren't enough of those, especially in North County. And so I don't know if that's something that we would be able to use some of this funding for, because I do know that folks like Good Sam are tapped out. And I, and it's my understanding that the United Way of Santa Maria is no longer doing homeless response, or they're not aiding in those efforts anymore. And so the number of nonprofits that are available to support folks that are experiencing homelessness have gone down. And so my question is, like, what can we do as a city? Or what can we come up with as a council that can help address or help further prevention or help in rapid housing?
Thank you, Councilmember Soto, through the mayor. So we are pooling our funds. There's more state revenue for those type of uses than this federal money. And so we are leveraging our state revenue to best align where we can do those kind of programs countywide. One challenge we have in the North County and why the conversions haven't been the same as they have been in South County or other parts of the state, is many of our functionally obsolete motels have already converted to farmworker housing. So they are providing affordable housing. It's just not toward that particular population, but primarily to our ag workers and our farmworkers.
I know a few years ago, we allowed, like, efficiency apartments to be developed in some of our older motels on the north side of town because of families needing, needing housing also. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, my other, it's more a clarifying question is, what does WWTP stand for? What project is that?
It's our wastewater treatment plant. And Chad is on the line as well, if we need, if you have specific questions about that. But that one is to run fiber out there? Yeah, so it's a, it's another opportunity. We have our fiber optic ring through the city, and it's another spur to run it out to the treatment plant out to the west of town.
Are you?
Those are all my.
That's it? Oh, okay. Okay, Ms. Waterfield?
I'm good with this. I'm looking at everything. We seem to be covering a lot of different things that would be good for the city of Santa Maria. So I am pleased to see everything from public service to playgrounds to our wastewater is just fantastic.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to ask a question to the chief, the Chief of Police regarding the license plate readers. Has there been some positive return on that, the utilization of those? I would assume so. But, and if you don't want to answer strategically, then that's, I understand that.
I was just gonna say yes and sit down. With how those cameras have played out with shootings, hit-and-run traffic accidents, recovering stolen vehicles much sooner for victims. So there's been a whole array of examples we could share. But with the expansion of it, it would just be that much more effective.
Thank you, sir.
Just another question that popped into my mind.
Oh, no, that's it.
And I remember, this is something that was already brought up to the council a few months ago, the license plate readers. But this isn't going to do any, like, profiling, right? It's not like gonna read my face and say.
Only, only yours.
Or somebody's face.
So there's no facial recognition, it just the license plate, and they can pick up a specific. Details on, of the vehicle bumper that can be used to, you know, help solve and identify suspects or vehicles involved in crime.
I would, I would add, Madam Mayor, that at the federal level, they're constantly, to address your question, they're constantly critiquing that on how intrusive that is against you and I, is just people driving by, so that it's confined to just the investigative tool and not allowing it to become just a blanket. So that's constantly, not locally here, it's not going on exactly, but at the federal level, it is being constantly monitored.
There's definitely a distinction between, they had at one point red light cameras, and those would be used for issuing citations. So these are completely different. There's no enforcement piece that will, somebody will be cited or anything of that nature. It's just for investigative efforts.
Thank you. I have a couple, well, more than a couple, I even wanted to ask. Should I ask Mr. Posado or Mr. Posada? This has to do with parks. One is the accessible playgrounds. There's eight projects.
Madam Mayor, when you're finished, also, Councilmember Escobedo has raised his hand.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, thank you very much for the question. So what we would do is, if you've seen in the new playgrounds, it's that rubber ized surface. And we would be updating many of our parks that have the wood chips. And then also, we would be replacing some of the equipment that, in order to make it more accessible, more transferable, more usable by individuals that have a disability or parents that might have a disability.
Okay. Then you, just stay there, because it's mostly parks. So the sports lighting, there's three, three projects?
Correct. You might recall back when we did the PG&E Southland Study, we identified some facilities that we wanted to look at lights. So those are the Crossroad Basin at Crossroads and Professional, no, I'm sorry, by the county offices.
Yeah.
Adam Basin, the current soccer facility that we have, and Oakley Park. Those facilities were part of the study, so we have already a lighting plan in place. I believe the environmental work has already been done. So those projects jumped right to the top of our list. If we open those, we would be able to, I don't know, add probably another 30% of field space availability to our youth groups, because right now they're not lit, so that means at night, nobody gets to use them. So we're really excited about having those projects added to the list. They'll make a big impact with our sports community.
I think this is, I think this is great, because so many, for so many years, people have come and asked for lights at our sporting places. And so the Santa Maria Sports Complex.
Yes. So that is the project at Stoll and Depot. That's the project that we received the grant for. There's obviously going to be gap funding, and that's what this is for, to help us make sure we have the funding to move the project forward. We're excited about that project, too. We are in the process right now of getting our appraisals done as are required by the grant and open some discussions on the purchase of the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then the next thing I wanted to ask about was the broadband last mile. Do you want me to ask Jeff? Okay. Okay, I'm, I serve on the Ag Hot Committee with SB CAG for broadband, and I have asked Jeff to serve on there also. And in Santa Maria, we got the money for broadband, but it wasn't the question of accessibility, it was the question of affordability, because we have a lot of people that need to use, that can't afford to use it. So we need to make it accessible for them. And especially during COVID times, when we found out a lot of these kids couldn't even get on their laptops that they were given at school to be able to stay in coordination with their education. So would you like to speak about what we're going to be doing there?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So this, this project, or this, you know, this project is a contribution to a strategic plan. We're in a, we're joining a consortium of eight cities in the North County, central North County of Santa Barbara, and also with the county itself. So the total cost of the project, which will define and design a network that extends from the southern part of San Luis Obispo County through Santa Maria, down the corridors of 101 and Route 1, and create a fiber highway, so to speak, so that more vendors can get access to the fiber and bring more opportunities into Santa Maria and the other eight cities, as well as other areas of the county, so that we can drive or hopefully provide more service and bring down the cost of broadband. Our specific request during the strategic planning process is, just as the mayor said, to not only look at accessibility, which we tend to have here in Santa Maria, but also offer ways that we can drive down the cost to homes as well. So it's a, it's a long-term project. This is the first step. It's to develop the strategic plan. And then, of course, the follow-on will be the actual build-out of the network.
Thank you very much. Any other questions here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo's on the line.
Okay, Councilmember Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Thank you. First, I'm really excited about the things that we can, we're gonna be able to make with this, with this money from the federal government. And I want to specifically talk about the, this park complex. And I have a, I have a couple of questions about it. And one, it's in regards to the zoning. So the property, it's currently seen as open space and residential and commercial as well, as I've seen in the city zoning map. But I have seen before that there has been some farming in it. So one of my first question would be, is that allowed, is it legal to farm on open space or residential land? I don't know who, from the staff.
Yes, Councilmember Escobedo, yes.
Yes, it is.
That's an acceptable use.
Okay. Then, then the paperwork we submitted to the state in March of 2021, as part of our grant application, stated that the land acquisition costs were less than $5 million. And the total project was $8.6 million. So what are the current estimates for acquiring the land and basically the total cost of the project?
Good evening, Councilmember Escobedo, Mayor and City Council. Yes, so what we're trying to do is make sure that we have the funds to move the project forward. You know, everything's based on estimates when we submit for the grant. One of the things that we were unaware, or that we were aware of, and that was that we were gonna have increased costs. That's, that's almost a given, especially now with the way that projects are being bid. We're seeing a lot more costs in the projects we're putting out there. So the other item that we have to do for the state, as I mentioned, is go through an appraisal. Once that appraisal is done, we have to then negotiate the price with the property owners. So it's a placeholder, Councilmember Escobedo, to make sure that we have the funds to move the project forward. We don't want to have to come back and say, you know, we're short funding, and we're gonna have to find it somewhere else. The ARPA funding is a good way to make sure that we have the funds available to make the project a reality in a relatively short time.
But do we have an estimate of that gap, how big that gap would be or can be?
We really, we need to get the appraisal done, because that's kind of the elephant in the room, is how much the land is gonna end up costing, and where that fund, the funds will come from. So, you know, we have the total project, given the county money that we have, and the grant brings us, you know, pretty close to that $8 million, if not slightly more than that. But until we get that land appraisal, we really won't know. So I'm sorry, I can't give you anything better. I think the number we put in the ARPA project is our best estimate for now.
Because I was, I got the, I got information that we can be looking at an increase of five or to nine million. And from the price that were the appraisal we put and the grant request, to the, to what's, what am I gonna end up with, or ended up happening? So I thought that with the 8.6 million was gonna, you know, this was gonna happen. But, you know.
Yeah. I'm, I think what I'm hearing you say is that based on the amount of money that was put in the grant proposal, which was, again, an estimate at the time, that you're hearing that it will be more than that amount of money. And we don't know that, because you, we have to go through the appraisal. The state of California will not allow us to pay more than the appraised value for that piece of property. So once that appraisal comes back, then we'll be in a better position to tell you, to tell you what the cost is gonna be.
Okay. Because, yeah, I mean, if, I don't know, I wouldn't like to see, I don't know, I would like to know, you know, how we can go from a land, this is a land from, let's say, five million right now, and then we ended up spending nine million on it, and just, I don't know, just.
I understand your concern, and I think that's something that, you know, if it ends up being a ridiculous number of land value, then, you know, we'll have to, you know, punt. We'll have to come back and regather our position and see how, what direction we want to go in. So again, we're not, we're committed to the project, but we're not, we haven't signed on the dotted line yet.
Okay. But yeah, I mean, as many of you already know, I'm a huge advocate for recreation, for creating additional recreation opportunities in the city, and it's one of my top priorities. And I have been pretty excited about this project for a long time, and I'm, but I'm, at the same time, I'm pretty concerned about, about the, about it. You know, the cost of land going from five million to nine million in one day, you know, it's much more than inflation. It's just, it's a, it's hard to justify, and I cannot justify spending four million per soccer field. I think that's, that just doesn't make sense. But, you know, because we can be sacrificing other priorities and things that we can do with that money. So I was looking at some other properties in Santa Maria, and there, you know, if we go to, there are other places that can give us a better deal. And so, I don't know, it's a, it's not, it's also not that we represent to the county or to the state, we're seeking financial help on this project for those reasons. So I cannot, I would not support additional expenditure as recommended by staff. And I would like to see this item come back for a full hearing, so we can fully understand the cost, the actual cost, as you mentioned, what's, what's gonna be that, and discuss, and even make it a single item in the future, in the close future. So that's, that's my take on. So that's, that's my take on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo. Any other questions, comments from council? Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor.
We're spending $37.2 million, and nobody wants to contribute, contribute any more comments. Okay. And, and the thing is, we have $37.2 million, and we've got to have it spent by December 31st, 2024. So we've got, you've got three women here, we know how to spend money, right? Okay.
Madam Mayor, is that spent or committed?
Spent, it says.
We can spend it.
Yeah. We can spend it. Not, not a problem.
Yeah, I'll help.
Okay. Okay, so this is just an update, and we don't have to do any action on this.
Right, and we will bring forward additional updates for the council as the projects evolve. And of course, the council will still need to adopt procurement process and support bids and contracts as well.
Well, and I'm really excited on the, on the fiber optics that we are going to be doing. I just think that is so necessary, the broadband that's going through. And it's really interesting, this is probably the only committee I've ever worked on where we all agree and we're all moving forward, which makes it very expeditious. And I think maybe San Luis County might want to get involved with this, because it'd be, really becomes a regional issue. So, thank you very much, Jeff. Okay, the next item would be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next meeting of the City Council is February 1st. A couple items to note is a retirement resolution for Senior Plans Examiner Tom Jack, and a presentation on the City Art Master Plan. And that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you. Reports from council, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All I have to report on is that I did the Ben Hayes Show, and we had a lengthy board meeting by Zoom with Communicify during the last, during the last two weeks.
Ms. Waterfield? Ms. Soto?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to take a moment to remind folks that this January, the 22nd of January, will be the 49th anniversary of Roe versus Wade. And so I am, you know, just like many members of our community, really eager to finding ways to be able to expand access to abortion care in this country and prohibit further restrictions. And the last thing I would like to say before the meeting comes to an end, is that I would like to see us revisit our mobile, mobile rent stabilization for mobile home parks. And I would like to see that posted on a future agenda item.
Thank you. January 9th, I did the.
Madam Mayor, did you want to ask Councilmember Escobedo if he has any reports?
I forget about him. Oh, yes. Mr. Escobedo, reports. I'm sorry, I forgot about you.
You know, that reminds me what Mr. Cordero was doing also soon. Now I know how you feel, Councilmembers Cordero. And no, nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. January 9th, I did the California Alliance of Local Elected Meetings. January 10th, I did the SB CAG Broadband Ag Hoc Committee. We're going to be bringing more people and more stakeholders from the public, as well as from the private sector into these meetings. January 12th, did a small business webinar. And January 13th, did the League of Cities Policy Committee Members Orientation. And on January 14th, did elected leaders forum to address homelessness. And then, oh, yesterday, I was very honored yesterday to attend the Martin Luther King Celebration at the Dick Dewey Center. So they, they alternate, I think, between Santa Maria and Lompoc. So went to Lompoc and, and then it, I thought, oh, we're going to get over before it rains. And halfway home, it was, it was pouring down. But I think that of, we owe Martin Luther King so much and what he brought to us in such a short amount of time. And when we gather to celebrate, and we can say all kinds of accolades about the man, and, and he was, he recognized he was just a man, but it was amazing, his faith that really brought him forward to accomplish as much as he did. And he probably think he didn't accomplish much, but, and all of his accomplishments are so numerous. And, but you can put them all together in the Civil Rights Movement, and he fought for human rights and the rights for all of us here, and it's changed a lot of people. And it was interesting to hear some of the speakers, and these were really, really dynamic speakers and pastors from Lompoc and from the Santa Maria area, and from Dr. Weston from the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. And that man is really a dynamic speaker. And everyone spoke a little different, came from a little different position on this. And I, and I think that it's just so important to acknowledge a man that has done so much. And, and I remember, I remember thinking, think, that this man, he just can't be real, because he was very, very peaceful, he was very constrained, he, he had a message, and he was going to give that message and in a very peaceful manner. And he did that, and he walked the walk and talked the talk. And so it, I just thought it was really important. And a quote that he had, and he had many great quotes, was life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others? And I think that is so, such a valuable thing, and if we can do half of the things that he did. Yes, Mr. Cordero.
I mentioned several years ago now, but if anyone gets an opportunity to visit the Martin Luther King Junior Museum, and you visit the church that he stood in and so on, it is just outstanding. It's, it's emotionally moving to be there and walk the same streets that he walked. And I got that same kind of feeling that you're trying to express. But if anyone finds themselves in a position to visit that memorial, it really is special.
Well, periodically, I go back to DC, and I've always, I took two of my grandsons, because I wanted them to learn about, a lot about the history of their country. And when you stand at those steps at the Lincoln Memorial, and you look out across the Mall, and you think about 250,000 people being there, and how that must have been, it had to be just amazing. You just think, you wish you could have been there at that time. But anyway, it was, you know, it's always very moving, and to go to the Martin Luther King Memorial there in Washington, DC. And tonight, I am adjourning this meeting in honor of Joey Deanda. Joey was one of the city of Santa Maria's first youth ambassadors. He caught the attention of Recreation and Parks Director Alex Posada during one of Joey's Kid Reporter segments on KCOY News. Alex knew Joey would be ideal to help promote the Abel Maldonado Community Youth Center, which was in the planning stage at the time. Joey welcomed the opportunity to promote the youth center and his peer group, and soon earned the respect of the staff and his fellow youth ambassadors. His natural leadership and communication skills were a tremendous asset to the city. Joey helped create positive momentum for the grant opening of the center, which was held on November 30th, 2001. He helped conduct outreach for junior high and high school students, so the center would have programs they wanted. And here we are, 20 years later. The youth center still welcomes youth from all schools and all backgrounds to come together, enjoy a myriad of recreational programs, and help them to grow into fine adults like Joey. Joey started helping his community at a very young age, and that goal of his never ended. In a variety of roles, he never stopped helping his community. And his father said to me, I am very proud of my son. And with that, I adjourn the meeting tonight.